The order, the Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, public meeting of this city of Falls Church. I will start off by reading this unnoticed. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held for split due and in compliance with the Renewing Freedom and Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and split in local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pd and on FCC TV, which is Channel 11 on Cox, Channel 2 on RCN, and Channel 35 on Horizon. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Please submit comments via email to plan@fallschurchva.gov. Again, you can submit public comment via email until the end of the public hearing by sending it to plan@fallschurchva.gov. All right, also a quick reminder to my fellow commissioners, please make sure you have muted yourself in case you're planning to talk. This will help us avoid technical problems with echo and make it easier for everyone to hear whoever is speaking. And with all that out of the way, Ms. Bazemore, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Rankin.
I'm here.
Mr. Krasner.
Sorry, I'm here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
Mr. Whitaker is absent. Mr. Quinteros.
Here.
And Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Weiss.
Here.
All right, thank you for that. Now I need a motion to adopt tonight the agenda. Anybody up for that?
I move.
I'll second. Melissa.
All right, let's take a quick moment, Ms. Bazemore.
Mr. Rankin.
Yeah.
Mr. Krasner.
Mr. Krasner.
Yes.
Mr. Quinteros.
Mr. Quinteros.
Yes.
Ms. Teetz.
Ms. Teetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens.
Yes.
Ms. Weiss.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to assume, but I will check if we have any petitions or items not on the agenda.
There are none.
No, none. Okay, we do not have a speaker series tonight, and our only action item is to approve ideally the August 5th, 2020 minute. Does anyone have any comments, adjustments, edits to the minute?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Weiss, let's hear them.
In the discussion of the South Gate rezoning and site plan, I'd like to add the following amendments to the minutes. Several commissioners expressed concern with procedures. When the Planning Commission had a working session on this project, there was no consideration of rezoning, and the Planning Commission never had a working session to consider rezoning of the site. And then the second addition is several commissioners expressed concern with the location of the building, specifically with the parking lot located in front of the building rather than behind the building.
I don't personally have any problems with those edits, assuming you could provide the text to Ms. Bazemore after the meeting.
I'm happy to do that.
And, but, anyone else have any comments about those adjustments to the minutes? Not seeing anyone. No, Tim, Mr. Stevens, you unmuted?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, everyone else has remained muted, so maybe we could get a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I move that we approve the amendments as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Teetz. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second for Ms. Weiss. Ms. Bazemore, could you take a vote on that, please?
Yes. Mr. Rankin?
Yeah.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Teetz.
Yes.
Mr. Quinteros?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that out of the way, we are on to information items. Planning Commissioners' reports. Does anyone have a report that they would like to give? I'm just looking at the list, whoever unmutes gets to go. All right, guess it's the slow days of summer. We have a couple of items of correspondence which I have looked at, neither of which I think needs to be discussed in this meeting, but if anyone would like to comment on the two bits of correspondence we have, now is your time.
Chair, do we have any action item associated with the Hangman's Tree block memo, or is that strictly for our information?
I will defer to staff. My understanding is it's more of an FYI to us. I don't think we play a role in that, but if I'm wrong about that, someone on staff could correct me.
So there is no action at this time. I'm not sure. We'd have to check to see if it does get considered by council if it would be referred to Planning Commission for an action, but at this point, it's simply something that was discussed at a historical commission meeting, and they've provided the action that they are recommending the plaque to be removed to council.
Okay, thanks for that update. And then I see we have no written director's report, but Mr. Fuller or anyone else on staff, if you have a verbal report to give, you're welcome to do so now, although not required.
So it looks like Gary may have dropped off the call. Yeah, he's no longer showing in the list. I don't think we had anything to update the commission on.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I just wanted to give him a chance. All right, well, great. We burned through that quicker than you can imagine, which brings us to the first of our four work session ideas, which is the West End Small Area Plan, which we have seen a couple of times. This time back with quite a few edits, I think, after a bunch of boards and commissioners had commented. I'm guessing someone on staff is going to start us off?
Yes, so that would be me. So the request before the Planning Commission tonight is to review and provide final feedback on the draft West End Small Area Plan, and this would be in preparation for consideration on September 2nd of this year. So updates that have occurred to the plan since the Planning Commission last saw it on June 17th in work session are summarized beginning in line 10. And so I just want to quickly highlight some of the major changes that have occurred as a result of those Planning Commission comments. First, during the June 17th work session, there was concerns raised about the idea of phase development within the West End. The plan previously suggested a strategy to expand the SEESP process. And so based on the discussion with Planning Commission, as well as further discussion, both with City Council and federal realty with their goals for their site, staff has taken a look back at this section of the plan. First off, has revised the land use and zoning chapter to consolidate all of the land use and zoning strategies that are recommended to meet the plan's goals. So this is included on a single page in the plan, on page 3-13. In addition, in considering the plan's goals to meet urban tree canopy coverage, looking to thoughtfully incorporate open space areas, it's important that larger scale redevelopments can be just planned at one time. So looking to master plan these sites so that these features can be thoughtfully incorporated across the site in order to maximize those community benefits. So on this page, now the strategy that had originally recommended expanding the SEESP has been changed to more generally state the goal of promoting a phase development process for larger master plan sites. And then further discussion on the specifics of how that process would work would occur outside of the small area plan. But again, the idea here is to have a process that would enable larger sites, like federal realty sites, to come in with a master plan and then develop that area in subsequent phases. Another change to the plan is that further discussion has been added on diverse and affordable housing options. This is included on page 4-6 and 4-7. There's been a discussion added that defines workforce moderate and low income housing, and also a discussion of incentives and expectations for future redevelopment. Another item that had been mentioned during the June 17th work session was the idea of self-storage within the Gordon Road Triangle. Several commissioners mentioned that it did not meet the goals of creating a walkable environment. And so the change that has been made here is to take self-storage out of the list of desirable industrial uses within the Gordon Road Triangle, to keep that discussion focused on breweries, distilleries, arts and crafts spaces, and maker spaces. But the idea of self-storage has been moved to a discussion of redeveloping the property yard as part of a public-private partnership. And so that would provide the opportunity for the city to redevelop the property yard in order to meet necessary city services, and it may also provide the opportunity for storage of the materials and equipment that the city needs to carry out operations. And so those were the major comments from the Planning Commission work session. Following that Planning Commission work session, staff then presented the draft plan at a July 20th City Council work session. And so just going through some of the major changes that came out of that discussion, staff had, as I mentioned, had discussed the idea of a master planned process for this area of the city, and that was well received by council. In addition, there was a change to an existing strategy on page 3-13 to note the need for flexibility for retail in response to COVID-19, some of the changes to retail that might stick around in the future. So that language has been added into the plan. Also, during that work session with council, there was discussion about the fact that most development within this area, that the larger developments likely include residential. And so there was discussion about allowing some flexibility for different types of residential. And so the plan has, a few changes have been made to address that comment. One, images of Market Commons and Claridin has been added. This is a good example of a mixed-use development project that includes a residential transition area to buffer the commercial area from the, or buffer the existing neighborhoods from the commercial area. A note has also been added to the concept map noting that residential might be appropriate on ground floor areas, but only along secondary streets, or again, to buffer the existing neighborhoods. And there's also been some more language added on page 4-6 and 4-7 related to the flexibility for different types of residential within the West End. And then in order to meet the vibrant pedestrian, walkable goals that are set forth in the West End, there have been some changes to the plan to encourage wide multimodal zones that would support the vibrancy and transportation needs that are associated with this higher density development and expected taller buildings. And so those changes are included on page 5-10. There's been some revised text, a new strategy added, as well as some precedent examples. And then there have been revisions to the cross-sections on page 5-12 and 5-13, which show like the typical cross-sections for Haycock Road and West Broad Street. So that illustrates the idea of having the wide multimodal paths in this area. And then finally, after, well, on the same day as the City Council work session, staff did receive a letter from the Village Preservation Improvement Society. This is included in Attachment 8. And there are a number of changes that occurred to the plan based on VEPIS comments. One of the items that they raised as most important in looking at this area is that idea of having the step-down zones. So in response to that comment, there's been more emphasis placed on that concept, having that transition area between the commercial and existing neighborhoods. Again, Market Commons and Claridin is a great example of that concept. They also raised some concerns about data centers within this area, and so revisions have been made to the plan that the traditional hyperscale data centers, like one would see out in Marin County, are not what is envisioned for this area of the city and would not be desirable in Falls Church. And so this text has been revised to emphasize that and clarify that. And in addition, there's been additional text added that recommends further study of edge data centers to determine whether they're appropriate for the area, as well as to evaluate potential economic benefits, and that's included on page 4-13. And then finally, in terms of schedule, as I mentioned at the outset, it's the, it was the idea that this would be the final Planning Commission work session before this plan comes back to the commission on September 2nd for a recommendation to council. Of course, that is dependent on the feedback that staff receives tonight from the commission. But I did just want to note that in keeping with that schedule, staff did have to submit the legal ads yesterday in order to have them run tomorrow and next Thursday for that September 2nd date. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then in addition, of course, those legal ads, you know, if the public hearing needed to be continued, that would be possible as well. And then assuming that the September 2nd recommendation to council works out, then the plan would tentatively have action by City Council on September 14th. And that's all I have for the staff report, but happy to answer any questions or listen to feedback from the commission.
All right, thank you very much for that thorough update. I have a couple of questions, but I'll hang on to those. I'm going to go from the bottom of my list for comments, which means that Mr. Stevens, you're first. What I'll do is I'll go through, you guys can ask questions, have comments, and then once I get through, I will see if anybody has any follow-up questions and comments.
Okay, I do have a question. It involves the third strategy on page 3-13 of the draft, and it needs, it calls for replacing the mixed-use redevelopment overlay with a more flexible mixed-use redevelopment option for planning opportunity areas for incentive that promote phase development of a master planned site. And I would certainly agree that replacing the mixed-use redevelopment overlay is needed, and we certainly want to signal to property owners that redevelopment at higher densities, including mixed-use designs, is something that would probably be very welcome. Question I have is, does the wording that's in that third strategy, does it allow for the option of continuing to use the existing special exception process for mixed-use sites that we use today?
Yes, so that language doesn't necessarily eliminate the SE process for these areas, but I think for property owners like Frit that are looking, you know, at their entire 10-acre site, the SE process likely wouldn't be feasible for that size of the project, given that they're not looking to develop the entire space at once. You know, the Giant has a lease, I think, that goes out until 2040, so I think they're looking for something that would allow them to develop that site incrementally. And the SE, as I'm sure you're aware, the SE itself, if someone comes in and gets an SE, it's going to expire within three years. So that would make it difficult for Frit to, I think, use that option.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that I wouldn't want this to seem like it's something that would allow for various options when in fact, the only thing that would be possible, given the wording that you have here, is the SEESP process that is used for the school site. And that raises, at least for me, some alarm bells, because when we passed the, when we endorsed the use of the SEESP process for the school site, that is specifically with the idea that that was a one-time action for the unique circumstances for that site, namely, it was now very important that the city maximize the economic gain on that site to help pay for the high school. We were asking the developer to pay a very large amount of money upfront, in advance of when they would have control over the property. So those are situations that clearly made it, you know, very unique, and the majority of us of the Planning Commission at that time said that, yes, okay, we can agree with this if it's a one-time thing for that site. And so I'm concerned if we have language in the Small Area Plan that basically sets the table to now expand that into these planning opportunity areas for incentive. And I understand there's interest in getting a phase development, but it's not apparent to me why we can't have some kind of phase development with the existing plan. And also, just to keep in mind that that SEESP process was borrowed from Arlington, where it was used for very large projects like Shillington, Pentagon City, and now those are certainly much bigger projects than anything we're going to have in Little Falls Church. So anyway, those are my concerns.
Just to respond to that, this strategy does not mean that we're just going to take the SEESP and expand it to these areas. I think in looking at that process, I mean, one, we could take a look at what's worked and what doesn't work, and what makes sense for these areas, but there's going to be review and opportunity to take a look at really a new process for these two areas that would meet the goals of allowing a site to develop under a master plan in phases with the goal of maximizing the community benefits. So I think that that was, the staff's intent was to alleviate the concerns about expanding the SEESP by replacing it with a new idea that would be developed further with further discussion outside of the Small Area Plan.
Okay, so that multiple options are indeed possible.
Correct.
Yeah, my understanding is this update was made specifically to not tie it to the SEESP process, but instead to say, hey, look, the special exception process may not be perfect, so we may have to come up with something new, but that new thing has yet to be defined. Because I agree that the special process we used for the high school site, something like that may be workable, but we need to revisit it. We can't, because the main difference is the city controlled all that land, so permitted us to do something differently, because we ultimately had control of the land, which would be the case here. So anyway, I agree with all your concerns, Tim, and I think that this is crafted to specifically not imply that the SEESP process would be used here, but something like it could be developed in the future.
While we have that clarification, I can tell my favor.
Yeah, and if we, I mean, if we can think of tweaks to the language to make it more clear, I'm fine with that, but I definitely think that's staff's intention.
Yes, and that's correct. Everything Chair Rankin said is correct.
Hey, can I get that in writing? All right, Mr. Stevens, you have other comments or questions?
That's all I have, thanks.
All right, Mr. Quinteros, what about you?
My concerns are as Mr. Stevens articulated. I'm comfortable with the explanation. I think the new additions are great, and I'll go to the next.
Okay, sounds good. Ms. Teetz, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have one. And first, I just want to say to staff that I think they've done a great job with all these comments and all the changes they have made, and I really appreciate that you guys go through all the public comment. Like the VEPIS letter was very long. It was good that you guys spent that time going through it, so that, I just want to say, I appreciate that. I just have one thing. On that map, 3-14, where it says the planning opportunity area is the land use and zoning, so the revitalization area, the school properties are in that B2 central business, that darker pink, and then the front sections of the federal realty property are also in that. And I'm just wondering, should the B2 that's part of the revitalization perhaps maybe have a crosshatch or something over it to show that it's a different kind of B2? Because it does have different rules. Because I think if you look at like one of the federal realty letters, that they seem to think that perhaps that they can get a higher height here than a normal B2. And far as I know, unless it's changed, the revitalization area is just that, the, you know, school properties and with the current, the new development that'll come where the high school site is, the current high school.
Sure, I can add the Special Revitalization District for Education and Economic Development onto this map, so it's clear that that's where it's currently.
Yeah, that would be great. I think that'd just make it easier for people to understand the difference.
Sure, sure.
Okay, that's it for me. Otherwise, I'm really happy with all the changes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Teetz, Mr. Krasner, thoughts from you?
Yeah, just two quick things. Actually, Mr. Stevens stole a little bit of my thunder, and I also, you know, I appreciate, I reached out to staff, because I also have some questions about the federal realty letter that came in last week. Just to, so I'm perfectly clear, federal realty's letter, their point number two, which was the, which was the language that Mr. Stevens was just talking about, just so we're clear, you're not limiting, when the language in there was talking about providing additional flexibility and replacing the mixed-use redevelopment overlay for sites five acres in size, that, you're not limiting it to MUR sites, right? Like they're saying, I mean, at least I don't think that's what you're doing. Am I correct in that? I mean, they seem to be concerned that somehow, you know, they're being excluded from that language, or some portion of their site is. Can you just clarify that?
Yes, so that letter that was received, I believe, was on August 5th, and so I think the last version of the plan that they had seen as they were preparing that letter did not specifically include their site as an opportunity for phase development that's included in this third strategy that you're looking at now. So I think it's just, this new draft that you have, it does include their site, but the draft that they were looking at before, when they sent the letter, did not specifically include.
Right, because now it refers to the entire POA, number seven, and that's their POA, so.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that addresses that concern.
Yes.
The only other concern, you know, that they raised that I thought was, you know, not the only concern, but another concern that they raised that I thought was, you know, pretty legitimate, was their, you know, their point number five, A, you know, talking about connectivity and connections across Haycock to their site. I mean, you know, I will agree that, you know, that aspect of it, for them, you know, obviously they have their own vested interest, of course, as the landowners there, but for the city as a whole, I've always felt that, you know, ever since we annexed the high school site and the West Falls Church site, making sure that, you know, it functions as an extension of the city and not as like a, you know, not as like an island in Fairfax County, you know, was so important. And one of the key ways we do that is by making sure that, you know, especially pedestrians, you know, have an easy way to get across Haycock, but also, you know, any development that would ultimately occur on their site along that Haycock, you know, or in the vicinity of their Haycock Road frontage, I think it becomes very important how the streets line up. So when they talk about, you know, the lining up of, you know, the proposed street network, you know, to me, that, you know, Street A on the high school site, I mean, I think there's a lot of, it makes a lot of sense to me there. Now, I know, you know, obviously, the high school site is well ahead of, you know, any plans that they have, but could you respond to that comment and, you know, and the issue of the street network and what it may or may not do in the future to their property? I mean, I think that is a legitimate. I mean, I think that is a legitimate issue that we want to make sure the plan handles appropriately.
Sure, I know that we have spoken to the development team for the West Falls project, and they have taken a look at how their project could connect to the federal realty property. And so they actually marked up an exhibit that we had shared with the FRET team, but a few ideas that they had that would allow the Street C on the West Falls project to connect over to the FRET property would create a skinnier block on the backside of the FRET property that could be used for 65-foot-deep linear wood-framed multifamily building. They said it could be used for a string of townhomes, or a one-acre open space linear park area that would be, could be used by the property to meet open space requirements. So they feel like there are a number of options. Of course, it's not their site, so federal realty might want something different.
Sure, no, and I understand that. But I think, you know, again, it's in, obviously, it's, of course, they, as the owners, have the most at stake, but, but again, you know, even from our perspective, you know, trying to lay the framework to allow the development on their site that we would want to see, I think, you know, considering, you know, what the block length, you know, and what the, on their side as a result of the network, you know, that, you know, we're laying out a framework, I mean, there's, to me, there's a valid, you know, citywide kind of concern in making sure we set up the framework so that, you know, when they do look to develop, that we get kind of something there that is the best, you know, what we want and provides the character and the framework that we want. So, you know, I think there is a valid concern in that if we leave a very skinny, you know, block, a very large block, and then a very skinny one left over on the north side of that street, that proposed street, you know, just what does that do? Is that something that we are, are we consciously and purposely, you know, just taking that into account that that's what may occur as a result? You know, we should be very deliberate about it, and so, so I bring it up because, you know, they cited it, and as I looked at that issue, and I hadn't really picked up on that earlier in earlier discussions we've had, you know, to me, there is a lot to be said for making sure that both that the connection across Haycock is sort of obvious and easy and, but also, you know, is visually and character-wise and scale-wise, you know, fits in with what's going on across the street so that you really do have a continuity. Otherwise, the West Falls Church site does risk being just always like a discreet island, almost like a, you know, again, an island of Falls Church, you know, located away from the city, whereas when the federal realty site, you know, does eventually develop, and admittedly, it will take time, given some of their issues there, you know, that, it can happen in a way that really does make sense. So, you know, I understand that it's difficult because, you know, the high school site is so much further ahead in design, you know, and that's a real issue, but, you know, to the extent that can be considered, to the extent there can be language that can, you know, help to address that, you know, I don't know if there can be, you know, how much room, how much wiggle room there is in that network based on the constraints of the high school, but I thought it was valid, and, you know, I think to the extent there's more time to look at that, you know, I would encourage staff to look at that and see what could be done to address that concern so that we wind up with block lengths and building, you know, footprints that will make sense and be what we want on the other side of the street, so.
Sure, and then just to, you know, respond with a possible suggestion and some, a suggestion that was recommended in their letter was for the ability for them to shift density in the event that they're left with an area that they can't necessarily work with as easily, you know, so maybe they do make that their open space area, but they're able to shift that density to another part of the site.
That's, yeah, I mean, that's an idea. I mean, there are ways where I could sort of deal with that. I don't know, is the plan, I know they mentioned that, right, in their language, is the plan, does the plan pick up on that, or?
So that could be added as a result of this discussion tonight?
Yeah, I think it's worth thinking about. I'm not saying 100% that needs to be done. I mean, you know, I don't know what the consensus would be for that, but, you know, there's some logic in making sure that, again, my preference would be that, again, from a character standpoint, that the design works, but, you know, in lieu of that, perhaps there are ways to still get, you know, kind of what we want on the site. I mean, because there is, I mean, obviously, the city stands to benefit from additional density there, you know, in that location, and so, yeah. So it sounds like you understand where I'm coming from and where they're coming from. And I think, you know, there is a little bit more time to address it, and so if you can, I would encourage you to do so.
Sure, we'll take another look back at it, and of course, any other commissioners that want to weigh in, we'd be happy to.
Yeah, Brett, do you have other comments?
No, those are my two main, those are my two main comments, but that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Ms. Weiss, do you have any comments or questions?
Just two slight comments. One, just want to align myself with the conversation thus far on the SEESP conversation. I would suggest on page 3-13 that in the footnote, referring to phase development, maybe you just clarify, your staff should clarify, that currently the standard special exception process applies until such time as there is a, whatever process we need to go through to change that. And I would also suggest noting here, or maybe just as a side note, I think it would be helpful to have an explicit conversation with the planning commission, maybe city council, other bodies, just to evaluate the SEESP process, its pros and cons, what we've learned from it, and how we might want to use it in the future or not. So that's just one point there. The other point is that on page 7-6, there is mention of self-storage in connection with a public-private partnership with the property yard, and I think a public-private partnership is a great idea, but I'd like to remove self-storage as a specific public-private partnership, just because I'd like to think a little bit more creatively about other options for a public-private partnership there, like bringing technicians for electric vehicle maintenance, for example.
Did you just lose the audio or something?
Oh, that's better. I can hear again.
Sorry, was I talking unmute?
I think you were.
Yeah.
Oh, well, thank you. You guys are very patient listening.
I think we were all muted, it was like.
I thought I was having technology trouble, sorry.
All right. I don't know what you guys heard. I commented on Mr. Krasner's road alignment thing, saying the ship might have sailed in terms of that project under plans already, although we could tackle that in any planning we have to do there, but that the idea of hauling out trading density for open space in this area plan could make sense. I think that's a strategy that could be mentioned. And in terms of the self-storage point, I also think it's weird it's called out. I assume it's called out because the buyer letter mentioned it. I'm not as worried about it because it's tied to this idea of a public-private partnership, and I assume that's because part of what the property yard does is store stuff, so, but it still seems like an odd, specific thing to call out, because other than, other than that very specific scenario of it somehow benefiting the city and the property yard, it doesn't seem like a use that's all that compelling.
I can weigh in on that. There actually was a George Mason University graduate level class that took a look at what could be done at the property yard as part of a public-private partnership, and so they had evaluated a few different uses, residential, retail, industrial uses, and so what they came out as being the most economically feasible was this idea of having self-storage on the property yard site, both, you know, that it would work economically and then it would also help to store equipment and materials from the property yard. But I think, you know, we can also include, of course, nothing in the plan would preclude another type of use, but we could call out the opportunity to look at innovative uses as well as part of a public-private partnership.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it'd be interesting to see that study and how they came to that conclusion, but I don't feel strongly about it, it just seems odd to me. But other comments were, I support whatever else is said about making sure that we aren't implying that the SCSP, the CE process is what's on the table, but I do know that, I know some city council people are interested in, aren't super happy with how the special exception process works anyway, so I think there will be, I do think people will take steps to figure out other strategies, so I think that would be good. I, I'm still confused about the data center thing. I don't, you know, these edge data centers seem to me like you just put them in an office building, who's going to even know? But that's fine. I also personally think it's a little weird, well, I think anyone that can tell you how the world is going to be different once the COVID-19 pandemic is over is, you know, good luck. I don't know how they're going to know that. And so I also hope that by the time anything is really taking action based on this plan, the pandemic will be long gone. So I personally think it's weird to mention this specific pandemic. I suppose if we want to mention in places that the plan should be flexible in case there's global events like a pandemic, that could make sense, but it's just going to seem weird in 2025 to be looking at this thing and going, I had a pandemic. You know, I do think it will probably change business and things a little bit, but I don't think anyone really knows how yet, and so I think other than, other than calling out flexibility, which we do in a couple spots, I think there's at least one spot where we seem to conclude something specific that will be different after the pandemic, which I don't, I don't know if it's true. So I would personally say, if you want to mention pandemics, that's fine, but I don't think this particular pandemic is going to be at play when this plan is being considered. But overall, I think you guys have done a great job. I think it's evolved, started off a little rough, and I think it's been revised in a very positive way. I think it's great to see all of the different boards and commissions, I think, adding valuable changes, which is particularly impressive considering no one can have real meetings. I wasn't totally sure about some of the strategies for affordable housing, but I'm not an expert on that, and it seemed like those ideas were coming from people that know about that stuff more than I do, so I'm comfortable with their ideas. I did think like, like one of the strategies was microunits. I'm not sure that that's actually a successful strategy for real affordable housing, but I know there's similar strategies in there as well. And I do think overall, I don't know if we mentioned this, but overall, you know, because I think whenever we put a plan together like this, you get, some people get stressed about the density and things like that, but I think if we truly want to diversify our housing options, we're going to have to be able to pay for it, and that's going to be by committing some redevelopment and potentially some density that we're not used to. I think otherwise, it's all sort of wishful thinking because, you know, it's got to get paid for somehow. That's all I got. Anyone have any follow-up questions on this? Sounds like we have a couple of ideas to tweak it before our next meeting where we will hopefully pass it. All right. Now, I'm sorry, I wonder if I'm muted again, nobody can hear me. But I guess we're done with this item. Sound right?
I heard you.
Yes. So awkward. All right. Ms. Schaefer, you're good? You have any questions for us?
No, I think, I think everything sounds good. We'll make the changes discussed tonight and have it ready for consideration on September 2nd.
Great, thank you very much. Now, we're on to item 8B, which is the George Mason High School Phase 1 landscaping site plan amendment. This is the first of two high school site plan things, so we'll kind of tackle them together more or less.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I'm Jeff Holler with the planning staff. These are my items tonight. I think this is the first time I've been with the planning commission in quite a while. I hope everyone's doing okay. So, planning commission is requested to hold a work session for the plant, the plant's site plan amendment. Phase 1A and 1B approves site plan for landscaping at the George Mason High School. Actually, I'm going to do both of the, if it's all right with the planning commission, I'm going to do both of the staff reports at once so that I can just turn this over to the development team, if that's all right?
That sounds good.
Okay. So this is going to be a work session for two separate items, but one is for the site plan amendment. It's a landscaping amendment for Phase 1A and B. The second item is Phase 2 of the site plan. But I'll do a rundown quickly, first of the landscape amendment. So this is all in preparation for a planned public hearing for September 16th, 2020, for both items. But as for the landscape amendment, the applicant has revised the landscape plans into the approved Phase 1A and Phase 1B site plan. They were approved in May 20th, 2019, and August 5th, 2019 accordingly, to reduce site landscaping and meet budgetary restrictions. In a letter dated April 20th, 2020, to staff with their submission, they provide a general summary and justification to these updates to the landscape plan. I'll just run through the bullet points that are included here in the staff report. So the, one point is that they adjusted the planting mix at the parking islands located in existing Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School lot, as well as a new lot to the south of the fields and to the planting area at the corner of the middle school and Mustang Alley. Natural turf will be in place of plantings behind the softball field adjacent to the new building's dining terrace. Natural turf will be in place of plantings along Husky Trail to avoid informal circulation beyond that will be established by the paving, increasing the numbers of plantings being destroyed, increasing the chances of plantings being destroyed, I'm sorry. Natural turf will be in place of plantings at the northeast corner of the building along pedestrian pathway to the fields. And just a couple of points that the applicant wanted us to make sure are clear, that there will be no design changes to the main entrance of the building or the planted bio-retentions, and there are no landscape waivers required at this time. As far as the staff review, all the way down, I do have some information here in the middle that just relates to the background on the project, which I think most of the planning commission knows just from, just from pushing through the site plan, Phase 1A and B. So I'm going to skip that for now, but as far as the staff review for the landscape amendment, the applicant has made a total of two submissions of the landscape amendment since April 20th. Comments came primarily from the city arborists, and they remain pretty, pretty small, pretty minimal. All comments were addressed by the second submission through direct coordination between the city arborist and the applicant. Comment responses were attached to the staff report and to the final submission, and the second submission yielded no, no additional comments from staff. I will jump over now to the Phase 2 site plan. So the Phase 2 site plan has had a little bit of a longer review period. Just to go over that, let's see here. So the Phase 2 is something that we discussed when Phase 1A and 1B were being separated into phasings. into phasings. Phase 2 is often referred to as the trapezoid area, the parking area across the way. Phase 2 includes construction by the schools of surface parking in, like I said, the trapezoid area, as shown generally on this high school site plan and proposed future parking plan. Proposed of Phase 2 is now surface parking with a minimum of 193 parking spaces to be provided by the school, along with stormwater and utility improvements. Any additional future amendment to the approved high school plan is to be determined under the West Falls Church Economic Development Project off-site development and parking features based on the final design of the adjacent approximately 9.45 acre parcel. Let's see. So for the staff review, the applicant has made a total of four submissions of the Phase 2 site plan since November 2019. There are two additional pieces of information that staff has requested prior to site plan approval. First, there must be a memoration, I'm sorry, memorandum of understanding and a parking agreement between the schools and the neighboring Virginia Tech site must be established to ensure that the minimum parking requirements are met throughout the construction phases. Second, what staff is looking for is that we would like to see the most recent West Falls Church Economic Development Project Phase 2 design plans for the trapezoid area to be attached to the site plan as a reference document. This has actually already been acknowledged by the applicant, and they've already sent it to us. So staff has two comments. One is for the, is the, is the parking agreements between the schools and Virginia Tech, and the other one being just the, the future designs for the West Falls Church site plan, and one of them, one of them has already been met. So I think that's, that's all I have for the staff report. I think Gary is on the call if he, if he would like to add anything to what I suggested. Other than that, we can turn it over to the development team, who it looks like we have quite a few on the call.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Gary, did you have anything to add?
No, Jeff already mentioned this is scheduled for a public hearing on the 16th of September, both these items, and so I'll go ahead and turn it over to the developer applicant team. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Gary. Yeah, if the applicant can run through, I guess, in the same order, the landscape and then the site plan stuff.
Yes, hi. Good evening. This is Jack Chin. I think I'm supposed to be presenter.
Yes, I'm going to stop presenting now so you can start presenting.
Great, thank you. It is still saying disabled.
Well, Skype for Business is the best. Sure we'll get this sorted out.
You apply? Yeah, it still says to ask someone in the meeting to make me a presenter.
Okay, let me go do that.
Okay. And I'm trying to turn on my webcam so you can see me, but it's not allowing me to do that. And that's okay, too.
We'll just imagine that you're a movie star or something.
Emily, I think I might have done it for you.
I got it. I think I got the share screen. There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
We see something now. There we go.
You guys see the cover page?
We do. Well, now we see.
There you go.
There you go. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jack Chin with Quinn Evans, part of the design team with George Mason High School. Tonight, I'm joined by a couple, a few other people as part of the team, Kate Didek and Daisy Brangman from Brailsford and Dunleavy. Together, they represent the client side, Falls Church City Public Schools. Also with me tonight is Tim Bragan from Landscape Architecture Bureau. He is our landscape architect. And also Brian Del Fabro from Gilbane, who is our builder. It's been about, I think, almost a year since the last time we came to you guys for Phase 1 and B, for Phase 1, and we're happy to be back, although in slightly different circumstances, but certainly happy to see all of you guys nonetheless. I'm not sure if you can still see me at all, but we have a brief presentation for you tonight, and thank you, Jeff, for combining both issues, and we're going to, we're going to go through it exactly like that as well. I think what we're going to do is we're going to start off with Kate or Daisy to go through some of what we've been up to the last few months or years since we've talked, and then we'll go right into the Phase 1 landscape updates as well as the Phase 2 trapezoid. So let me actually make my screen presenter so it's bigger. There you go. So let me, okay. So what have we been up to? So Kate or Daisy, you want to take over and let me know when you want me to switch?
Yeah. For this first part of the presentation, we mostly just kind of want to show off pictures of the hard work we've been doing and how the project is progressing so far. We're currently on schedule for a December move-in, school starting in January of 2021, so a mid-year opening this year. We're working, after that, our, the development partners will demo the existing high school, and then we'll be completing the trapezoid by August of 2021. So this is work that will be happening over the course of the next year and finishing up at the end of next summer. So this is a picture of where we are currently on the east side of the building, so I just wanted to click through some pictures of where we are. So this is the exterior facade work from the perspective of the third floor, a lot of the detailed masonry that's going in. So utilities, including geothermal, have been installed. Again, kind of looking out at that exterior terrace and the work that's going into that facing the future fields. Roof work has been completed, except for some detailing on a few of the, like, applied roofs, but a lot of the roofing work is done and in place. The auditorium is looking good. Drywall's gone up. The auxiliary gym space, you can see the circular walking track, again, drywall fireproofing going in there. And we also just wanted to highlight some of our kind of continued engagement with stakeholders and the development of this plan, and as we've been moving forward with construction, we're participating in bi-weekly infrastructure meetings with the city of Falls Church, attends those meetings along with the EYA Hoffman team responsible for the West Falls Church development on the former high school site. We, so we've been in a lot of coordination with them. We've had a lot of work on the, on the parking issue that Jeff raised in terms of getting that MOU into place. We've had several meetings finalizing that agreement. We have also done some targeted coordination with the planning staff that Jeff also spoke about, you know, meeting with the arborist to go over specific details of the plan and making sure everyone is comfortable with our, with our plan. And then we're also continuing to send out monthly community updates through the FCCPS system to all of the different FCCPS schools, maintaining the project website and filming monthly construction update videos that we've been posting to Twitter and Facebook. It's been, we've had to kind of rethink some of our community engagement strategy based on the pandemic, but we're still trying to reach out and keep folks up to date on where we are with the project. So unless there are any questions on that, Jack and Tim will now move into the details of the landscape plan.
Thanks for that update.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. All right. So I'm going to stay at kind of a 30,000-foot level and run through kind of the major issues that Jeff had talked about from the staff report. Tim Bragan is available to answer some of the harder questions that I can't answer as we move along, so feel free to either chime in as we continue to talk, or we could do it at the end, you know, we're extremely flexible. When we initially made some of these changes public, last fall, I believe, you know, we probably didn't do a good job at explaining what we were trying to do, to be honest. We, you know, as Jeff mentioned, we were, as a team collectively, trying our best to make some adjustments throughout the entire project, not just on the site design, but also in the building as well, in order to provide what you see today when you drive by the site down Leesburg Pike, and to be able to have a building that everyone is going to be proud of. And in order to do that, some of the changes had to be done in the, in the site design, specifically in the planting areas. However, during the discussions with the client about that, it was extremely important that we provide a hierarchy in terms of some of the decision-making, and some of the decision-makings are also more functional, as well as Jeff had alluded to. So as we move through the four quadrants of the site, it's important for us to indicate what did actually change. And as Jeff had mentioned, what didn't change is the entire front entrance of the school along Mustang, Mustang Alley, our main plaza here as the entrance into the school, and as well as the upgrades in front of Mary Ellen Henderson, and all of the bio-retentions, the planted bio-retentions throughout the site. Specifically, what you see here, as Jeff mentioned, are islands, changes to the planting mix, to the parking islands, planting zone in front of the high school, and then the two zones that Jeff had talked about near the softball field. One is up here and allows center field, which is directly adjacent to the dining terrace. So functionally, I think we all agree that it worked out better to provide more lawn area for students and staff to lay out, to bring their lunches or other meals out, to be able to watch a game underneath the trees. And of course, along Husky Trail, which is this little strip here on the left, if you see my cursor, is another place where we've, in our priority, we've deemed okay to eliminate the planting and just keep the turf. Because of the traffic, it's really tight there, students and staff accessing the fields from the back of the school and crossing between tennis and softball.
And just to clarify, because I know there was some confusion in the nomenclature, when we say turf, we're talking about natural grass, not artificial turf.
So as we move clockwise here to the lower-left corner, again, we're talking about the parking islands and the rest of the Husky Trail, as you see here on our right side. No change on the top-left corner, so that's obviously the penultimate area for our stormwater management. That's our low point, and it leads to the bio-retention. No changes there. And then the top-right corner, which is our access to the fields from the front area. So those planters along that area were changed to natural turf. So from here, we're going to jump into the Phase 2 trapezoid, unless you want to pause to talk about that, and I leave it up to the commission to let us know.
Why don't we just tackle this first, because they're pretty separate issues and it's top of mind. So I will go in the same order, and if you don't have anything, any questions, feel free to say no questions, but Mr. Stevens, about, if any questions or comments about this landscaping change request?
Yes, just a couple of quick questions. Thanks for the presentation. I'm just surprised that there's that much of a difference monetarily and what was there before, but there aren't any numbers, documents that we have, so, you know, that's just guessing on my part. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. Those that have the knowledge about the natural turf versus the plantings are happy with it, then I am. No objection. And just curious whether all of these changes have been run by the school board as of yet.
Well, I can answer the, kind of the monetarily issue. I think the project as a whole was looked at to help get us to a budget, and this was one of the many issues that the design team, the contractor, and the client looked at as part of those efforts. And I think Tim Bragan is happy to kind of discuss the very specific changes and why some of those affected the budget, if that's, if that's, if that's something that you're interested in, in having us answer, we're happy to do that.
Not in detail in particular. I was just curious whether it did relate to much of a difference.
It was, this is Daisy Brangman with Brailsford and Dunleavy. So there was a significant enough difference from a, from a cost-value perspective, but it wasn't just short-term, it was also long-term, looking at it from an operational perspective as to what the cost would be for schools to maintain what was initially proposed. And I know a lot of what we looked at was not necessarily just eliminating plantings, but instead of planting like a five-gallon planting initially, changing it down to a one gallon. So in the long term, we'll still end up with, you know, kind of that full, that full component, but it just won't be there at the very beginning. And highlighting, because we have this quadrant here on the upper left-hand side of the screen, when we looked at that with relationship to the dining terrace, that's also the location where they're looking to put, I believe, one or two farm bots that the school currently has and uses for curriculum. So it just provided a better condition in order for students to be able to congregate when they're out there for lunch, congregate to have, you know, to watch the softball games in the outfield, as well as if they're doing an outdoor class session around the farm bot, it just provided a more stable. So we really looked at it from both, you know, an economical perspective as well as an operational perspective and long-term cost.
Okay. Has this gone by?
Sorry, Commissioner, to answer your second question, FCCPS staff has continued to brief the board on the project, so the school board has seen these changes.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
All right. Thanks, Tim. What about you, Mr. Cortez? Do you have any thoughts or questions? I think you said no, because it looked like you unmuted and muted again. Now you're unmuted. Questions? Not hearing you, even though you're unmuted. If you really have a question, I'll come back to you. Ms. Teetz, do you have any comments or questions?
I just have a quick comment. I, you know, I'm not happy to lose the plantings because turf is not ecologically valuable. There's not much there to support habitats, even though where plantings and especially flowers and things can help out with pollinators. But, but I understand why the turf is being placed. I would ask that if you possibly could, is to use native grass. We have, we have local, we have native grasses, and unfortunately, most people tend to use grasses that are not native and can be invasive, so be careful what grasses you pick.
All right. Thanks for that. Mr. Grassman, do you have any questions?
No, no landscape changes. The arborist is generally satisfied. I'm fine with that.
All right. And Ms. Weiss?
I, yeah, I agree. I'm not happy to see the turf replacing the plantings, although I guess my naive, non-technical view of this is that we can plant later. I guess just a couple of clarifying questions, meaning we can plant later. Meaning we can plant later, we can always go back later to garden, or maybe there's a student project to do plantings or gardens. I mean, this is not a permanent change, I guess is what I'm saying, so that's why I'm not, you know, I'm just moderately upset about it, not seriously. But just a couple of quick questions. One, did I, I think I heard Daisy say that this is actually going to reduce maintenance costs for the school, so I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. And the second question is, you know, we're losing trees, so do we know what the effect on stormwater runoff will be by not doing plantings and trees in these spots?
I can answer that, the tree one. We're not losing any trees, and these changes have no effect on our overall stormwater management strategy.
Okay, so that, I'm sorry, you're right. You did clarify that no trees were being lost, so those plantings were going to be shrubs, ornamentals?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and just because I had some thought, like, down the road, schools have a bunch of extra money, they want to replace this turf with plantings, that, there's nothing that would stop that from having down the road. This isn't a fundamental change to the ground.
This is Tim. Yeah, I think that's generally correct, and that you can certainly plant pineels or grasses in the future in these areas.
All right. And I'll give Mr. Puentez one more chance, if his microphone's working, which would be sad if all he's trying to say is he doesn't have any questions. Not seeing him unmute, though. Oh, there he goes. He unmute, and then I feel like he's saying something. But I'm not hearing it. All right, well, how about this? Rob, if you, we might go on, but if you might have comments in the future, you might want to disconnect and reconnect, that might help, I don't know. All right. I don't really have any questions. I mean, like everybody, it's a bummer that we had to change it, but it does seem like it's having a big material impact, and, you know, seems like the people that are impacted most are okay with it. So with that, let's go ahead and move on to the trapezoidal issue, which is no longer a trapezoid.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so this is what we call the trapezoid. Plus, it will always be a trapezoid. So again, we're going to keep this high level, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions. The trapezoid has been an area that's been, you know, brewing for an extremely long time. The overall design has really not changed since the development, since the design-build team has come on board, what's been over two years now. But there have been tweaks, and certainly through communication between all stakeholders, we have refined it and made it better. The first area that I'm going to discuss is the front area, which is the north part of the trapezoid. This is an area that we all know will be impacted by the future design coming through. That's going to make this area a little bit different. So through coordination with all the stakeholders, we've made this area extremely flexible. So it's minor things like, instead of a concrete curb around the islands or around the corners of the parking lot, it is just painted stripe. And we know that, you know, originally it might look awkward, but there's certainly good reason behind that, and if you guys have seen the latest plans, you will know that this area is going to turn into something completely different. And the other area of coordination is, of course, along Leesburg Pike. So, you know, we've gone back and forth with all the stakeholders in terms, not only of the design coordination, but also about timing, when things are going to get built. We know when we are going to do the, we as in the George Mason High School team are going to do the trapezoid, but we have recently been able to get together with the development partners and be able to time the future streetscape as well, in order to eliminate an interim condition. So in addition to that, we've also been coordinating with the final design of that streetscape to make sure ours will gel with that design as well. So the other portion is along the eastern edge of the site. You know, this is going to be an urban development. We're going to have buildings and other structures budding up, right up against our line, and so that resulted in further coordination with all the stakeholders, the city, staff, and the development partners. And so we've developed this section that you see in the inset there, of what that edge looks like. We've accommodated our park, and we've provided a curb, and then there's a little bit of kind of a buffer zone area between our curb and the property line. So there's a lot of reasons for that. One is that we understand when our development partners come in and start to do their construction, it's going to affect our property line. And so this gives us some flexibility, gives the schools flexibility, that it won't negatively affect a lot of the parking spaces along that edge. And it also provides a future buffer between the parking spaces and any future building or any other structure that is adjacent to our site. So all the corners, the top, not all the sides, the top, the bottom, and the east side have been fully coordinated through what Kate had talked about earlier, through the targeted meetings with staff, meetings with stakeholders, and the continued coordination, even to this day. We had a call earlier this afternoon with our development partners. And that is it for that, but we're happy to keep this on here to answer any specific questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go through, I don't have a few questions, I have maybe two. But Mr. Stevens, do you have any questions about the trapezoid?
Thank you again for the presentation. One has to do with the streetlights, the lighting for this. The city is in the process of reevaluating its streetlights for conversion to LED. I don't know if this is possible, and give coordination with what the city is going to be doing, but that might be something to consider. Zach Bradley in Department of Public Works is kind of heading that up, to my knowledge. Then the other issue that it'd be good to get us status on, if we have it, is just the situation regarding electric vehicle charge stations and whether or not there's any structures included in this lot for future installation of those devices.
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that. There will be eight or four dual-port electric vehicle chargers in the middle school parking lot, so not this trapezoidal parking lot, but sort of, and not the parking lot directly in front of the middle school. But if you went west on this plan, there's a parking island in the middle of the parking lot, south of the tennis courts, and that's where we are locating, yeah, so that parking lot island where you see the change to turf, there will be four electric vehicle charging stations installed in that location, and we're actually working to finalize the change order to get the electrical infrastructure to support that install.
Well, that's good news. Just curious who you're working with, or can you say that?
For the infrastructure, we're working with Gilbane and their electrical subcontractor, Free State, and the other subcontractors that they've hired to do the work on the high school. And then we're still in the process of selecting who we're going to purchase the actual electric vehicle charging port stations from.
Terrific. Good luck with that.
And so to answer your first question about the streetlights, I believe you're talking about the streetlights along Leesburg Pike, and if that is the case, then that scope is wholly by development partners. We will be providing our parking lights throughout the trapezoid, as well as, you know, the rest of the parking, surface parking areas to the west of Mustang Alley. However, the lights along Leesburg Pike will be by our development partners.
Your lights, all the LED and dark sky compliant?
They are, they're all LED, dark sky compliant, yes, full cutoffs.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Mr. Stevens. Mr. Puentez, I don't know if you're back.
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize.
No problem.
Tech directions are mine. I figured this out by myself. And actually, I don't even come, so.
All right, well, I'm glad we've gotten back in touch with you. All right, Ms. Teetz, what about you?
You know, something I don't understand is now with the Phase 2 of the development project, putting an office building over part of the trapezoid, is this really their best design? I mean, when that building goes on, there won't this parking lot have to be redesigned again? It just seems like, shouldn't we be trying to design in a way that we would have to do less work when that Phase 2 happens? That's my only question.
That is a good question.
Jack, I'll start, and then if you want to add it. And so this is Daisy. So we still have a commitment and a requirement to meet our 400 parking spaces, and as Jack mentioned, because of the timing of when the development is going to finish their work or even start the work in this area, and this is part of Phase 2, which may not even happen until 2024 or 2025, depending on how the economies of it work, so not just from a planning and zoning requirement perspective, but just from an operational perspective, the school needs these parking spaces now, so it's in the best interest of the school to go ahead and build this the way it is currently designed, and then when the development comes in and that portion gets transferred over from the city to them, then they'll coordinate, and part of the MOU is ensuring that any parking spaces or any modifications to the parking lot will be covered by the development partner.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. I didn't know they were going to cover any changes to the parking lot, so that's fine, because I was just thinking that maybe the aisles could be different, or, but if they're covering costs, then that's the best we can do, probably. Thank you.
They're covering costs, and they're covering, recovering the lost parking spaces when they build on the property.
The idea of them going to the structure parking that will be built, presumably?
Yeah, that's what's currently under discussion, yep, that we're working on finalizing.
Okay. Ms. Teetz, do you have anything else?
No, that's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Grassman.
Yeah, honestly, I don't have much more to add to this. I think my colleagues have raised a few issues that, you know, I was curious about, but in overall, you know, I'm satisfied with where this is.
All right. And Ms. Weiss, do you have anything?
No questions.
Okay. I have a quick question, or two. Staff said you guys already met their one request, which is get the updated plans attached, but then the other one is the parking agreement with the neighbor property. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. The situation is, we're going to build a new school, it's going to open in January when the kids will still be at home, but that's fine. Okay, so it'll be open, but you won't have this trapezoidal parking lot yet, because that's, part of that's the current high school. Then we're going to tear down the high school, and you guys are going to build this parking lot. So the agreement that you need to nail down is enough parking spots to cover you from when the high school opens until when this parking lot is built. My question is, one question is, how much time do you anticipate that to be?
How much time to finalize the MOU?
No, like, when would this parking lot exist, the trapezoidal parking lot?
August of 21.
August of 2021?
Yes.
So not to be, like, depressing, but it's entirely possible that that parking will not be needed until the fall of 2021. So I'm just starting out, I don't know what you guys, what the schools are paying for this parking agreement with the neighbors, but the way things are going, it may not be needed. I think we still want it, but hopefully there's some sort of, like, opt-out if we don't even start school until next fall.
Yeah, so to clarify, really what the MOU or the parking kind of plan letter that is missing is, how are we going, I believe it's 196 or 97 parking spaces, Jack, correct me?
193.
193. 193 parking spaces in this trapezoid. So between January and June, when school is operational, that's the conversation we've had with staff and planning, that's when we need to make sure that we've got the 400 parking spaces required for the school's operation. During that time, the big chunk of it is actually going to be covered by the development partner in an interim condition within the existing high school site. It's actually a much smaller number of parking spaces that we would have to accommodate, whether it's at Virginia Tech or Womata or some other arrangement. Once we get that finalized with EYA, we'll start having that conversation with Virginia Tech, and to Kate's point earlier, it's a multi-party conversation. We're working closely with Mike Shields, the city manager, we're working, you know, Dr. Noonan and Kristen and the development team, we're all interested in finding a solution to this. Really, what's left to submit is just that commitment. We will have 400 parking spaces come January, and we'll internally figure out how.
All right, so you're going to get some parking spaces from the development partners next door, once you know how many that is, then you'll go to Virginia Tech, whoever. I just, it's going to be a big waste of time, because we're not going to, no one's going to use them, and there'll be, I could be at a school, but.
We're definitely looking at the most flexible, and we don't want to use city money for parking spaces that aren't going to get used. So that's part of the considerations that we've been working with Dr. Noonan and Ms. Kristen Mikeless.
Right, that's great. Okay, I don't have any other questions. So it sounds like from us, other than, you know, and I'm not paying because it's required parking thing, seems like you'll be in good shape when you come back.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All righty, moving on. We have one more item, which is expanding community notice for development applications, which sounds like a smart topic, and somebody on staff is going to.
Yep, that's me again.
Twice in one night.
I know, I know, I like to put them all together in one meeting, you know? Okay, so once again, I am Jeff Hahn with Planning Staff. So Planning Commission has requested to hold a work session to discuss and provide feedback on new approaches for public notification of subdivision and site plan applications. Land development applications, like subdivision, site plans, rezonings, comprehensive plan changes, special exceptions, include legal advertising and notice requirements. The intent of the advertising and notice requirements is to raise the awareness of the application and to give stakeholders a way to get involved in the review process. Larger-scale redevelopments are often covered by the local paper, and community at large is generally aware of them. Smaller-scale redevelopments, however, are typically subdivision and site plan applications, they are not covered the same way. And often, often potential stakeholders become aware of projects late in the review process, which may lead to frustration, missed opportunities, and delay. In the City of Falls Church, the legal notice requirement for site plan and subdivision applications for adjacent property owner notices, also known as A-PON letters, are sent to property owners within 150 feet of the project area 10 days before a scheduled public hearing with the Planning Commission or an administrative approval. In many cases, the 10-day notice may be the first time property owners are made aware of a proposed project. This means that stakeholders are getting involved in the late stages of a review process when changes are more difficult to incorporate. Additionally, there are no requirements to provide notice to non-property owners or to people living outside the 150-feet buffer. So included in the staff report as a form of reference to general advertising and noticing requirements in Virginia, and based on the Code of Virginia and local procedural requirements, the following tables, which you see, I'm looking at the background section of the staff report right now. We typically, as planning staff, we refer to the Arbomall County, Virginia Land Use Law Handbook, which is considered to be an excellent legal reference and is often used, like I said, often used by planning staff and often referenced by planning staff. And the tables below that on the staff report show a lot of what they deem to be good practices for public noticing for these types of applications. But internally, staff has discussed, and we've provided, at the end of this staff report, we've provided three suggestions. we've provided three suggestions. Our, our recommendation to the Planning Commission is our first, is our first one here that we have listed for onsite postings. Signage can be posted to the application site in advance of the first work session with the Planning Commission. This posting can have information about the project, when it was submitted, and the name of the case planner who is managing the project. This would be a relatively low-cost option. It would make notice available to anyone generally traveling in the vicinity of the proposed site. Another suggestion would be more Apon letters. Like I said before, part of the requirements, we have to send letters out 10 days in advance of a public hearing to anyone within, or, I'm sorry, to property owners within 150 feet of the application site. So one suggestion could be that we send an earlier letter, earlier on in the process, like the work session, or maybe shortly after the application has been submitted. And, and we could also send those same letters to non-property owners within that 150 buffer, 150-feet buffer, excuse me. And a third suggestion that has been sort of rolled around along, within, just among staff. I've chatted with the city's OCOM, the Office of Communications, who has electronic notification systems already in place. So sometimes it can be very difficult to tailor messages to those who might be interested in, in, in planning applications, in zoning applications. So the usage of the electronic notification system, which I don't know if any of the Planning Commission members, it probably are, are signed up for electronic notifications, emails, texts in regards to the many different boards and commissions that the city has. But they could, but one idea was that they could, the public could sign up for electronic notifications on these types of zoning and planning applications. That way, we could send out, you know, a notification to those folks who are interested and they could, they could see well in advance that, that something is coming down the pipeline. But that is, that has been just very briefly discussed with the Office of Communications. We'd love to look more into what our options would be if the Planning Commission wants us to go that route. But like I said, I think the, I think the easiest one to do, to implement, you know, pretty quickly, pretty easily, would be that first one for onsite signs and postings, well in advance of a work session or a planning, or, I'm sorry, a public hearing on a project. But this is, this, this item is really just to jumpstart a conversation between staff and the Planning Commission. I don't know if this is something that you have thought about in the past and have comments or suggestions that we should follow up on, but that's it. I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission.
All right, thanks for that, Jeff. I enjoyed reading about this. It is something I've thought about, because we do hear a lot from people and they're like, I've never heard of this thing before at the last minute. And I'm always like, well, that's unfortunate. I have a couple of quick thoughts, but I, I'll run through again, just like for Mr. Stevens. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Nothing profound. I'm, I'm okay with the onsite signs, posting suggestion that staff is making. I'm just curious, though, whether or not, you mentioned kind of sending out emails, but I'm just wondering if, if there were some sites on the city's website where these applications and so forth could just be posted there, not as a substitute or certainly not as a, as a legal, meeting a legal requirement, but just from an information standpoint, that anybody who's interested can go in and see what, what activity is occurring that might be of, of interest to them.
Yeah, I think we have, we definitely have avenues and ways to do that. You know, we have, we, we are given, you know, we're not in, the planning staff is not in the Office of Communication, but we do have some tools online, you know, updating our portion of the website and ways that we can post that information. It's just a matter of, you know, finding the right balance of, you know, what is the right amount of information and how do we get this out to the people who really do care? And I think that the, the high-level suggestion of this sort of opt-in electronic notification system is, you know, someone might find themselves saying, well, I, I very frequently, you know, am very interested in, in what the Planning Commission sees and what, and, and what types of applications are happening. And I, and I feel like I don't know what's happening before, you know, before it's too late. And so this would, I, I think that that would be a good way to sort of opt-in to this early notification system. So, you know, like I said, like texts or emails, but possibly something, you know, not quite as intrusive. But you're right, you know, posting something on, something on the website, you know, could be done and, and as, as someone who is frequently interested in that kind of thing, could easily just look it up on the site. Sure.
And that's all I know. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tim. Rob, you have any questions, thoughts?
Yes, we agree.
Yep.
I think this is, this is critically important, I think lowering the barriers of participation and getting as much folks involved with the, with the overall. The challenge I think I have, we're not trying to reach those folks who are interested. We're trying to reach folks who, who should, or who don't notice the petition, right? And I, I appreciate the three options that are here. I tell you, my God, it's just, it feels inane and I feel bad about that, because I don't have any better ideas. I, I wish there were more that we can do. It's my question to staff, it's just my own indication. Are there, is there anything that you reject? Are there other ideas that just, that don't work for the city? They're too expensive, they don't meet legal requirements? You know, what, what other options? These all sound fine to me. I just wish there was more of what it is. Anything else to reject?
The, the only thing I, I think, the only thing that I would say to that is, the, the second of the three suggestions is simply additional Apon letters. You know, and, and I think that, you know, trying to follow along with, you know, this 10-day before the public hearing, you know, requirement. I, I think to send more is very time-consuming. I, I don't know, we, we very often are assembling to stuff envelopes in the office and, and to get these sent out, so it doesn't cost us quite as much time. It's expensive for all that postage and everything. So I, I, I would steer the Planning Commission away from that as a suggestion, but it, it is something that I think could be most effective, because we do get quite a little bit of response from Apon letters, I think, in general. It's just that it's unfortunate that a lot of the time, it feels like it's too late in the process anyway. So I think it is, I think it is finding a, I think that does work pretty well, the letters already. But how can we make them work better and make them work in a way where folks can send us comments and those comments have time to be implemented?
I know, I know, like, that makes sense. I, I did wish there was more. I look forward to it.
All right, thanks, Rob. Ms. Teeth, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I do. One, I think the signs is a great idea. I do the marketing for our Habitat Restoration Team events at the parks. And we used to just do emails and do notices in the city newsletters. And we started putting signs up a week out. And we got a really great response from the neighborhood, a lot of people who just never noticed it in any newsletter or anything like that. So I think signs would be great. I think that on the electronic notification, I, I think it would be worth trying. I, I do get those notifications. You check the ones you want, so I get notification for about six or seven things. So I don't see why we couldn't break the city into four parts and just say, you know, if you would like to receive notice of upcoming site plans or development, you know, zoning issues, site plans, or anything like that, and just break it into, like, four sections, maybe like Southern Corners to Cherry Street, Cherry to Broad, Broad to West, West to Hickok. And then that, people can just check the, the section that they want. I mean, the worst thing happens if you don't like it. You go back and change your notification listing.
Sure.
And I was going to say on the Apon letters, you know, I, I think once is good. Maybe it could be set a little bit earlier. Or the other thing I would suggest is 150 feet is not that much. But maybe we could also, we could consider sticking into one mail-in, but increase it to 200 feet or 250, because the more people who see it, the more that information gets around. Because usually what happens with these letters, and I've seen in my own neighborhood, is everyone gets them, but only one or two people really pay attention to it. And as those two people, you know, send an email around the neighborhood, that you really start to get it. So maybe just increase it to 200 feet, to bring in a few more households, so we have a better chance of trying to get someone to see the letter and then get the rest of their neighbors to pay attention.
Sure.
But, and I can't think of anything else. I mean, I, I think it would be very difficult to try to do a special email list. So I think, I think we should try to add it to electronic notifications, the current system, and see what happens. And, but promote it like in the focus and things like that. And maybe promote it to community groups, because like, like I'm on the Vipas Board, so if we were going to do that, I could tell everyone, and I'm sure most of the Vipas people would check the box to get notification, because most of them get it now as well. But we could also put it out to the CDC and legal, so that's another way to get people to go ahead and just get that electronic notification. Because we have enough people doing that, that would help a lot.
Sure. I think just on top of that, too, I think the Office of Communications also has their community spotlight. And they have suggested that as being an avenue as well. I think that they're always looking for an addition, something to put into that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, I think that's a smart thing, too. Like I said, we put the Habitat Restorations go in that and we do get lift from that. The only thing we got really better lift is our email list, because we keep a list of people who come to events. And, but the signs actually brought in new people, people we didn't know about. So that's why I think the signs are great.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Mr. Krasner, do you have any comments?
Sure. Yeah, I have, I can put my two cents in, you know, since I have little experience in this arena. Actually, as exciting as the topic as it is. I mean, first of all, yeah, I agree, 150 feet is very arbitrary. I don't know where that comes from. You know, it's not in Virginia code. You know, I would actually encourage the city to switch to a format where you actually, a certain number of neighbors, you know, could be 10. You start off with every budding neighbor and then you go out until you get to a certain number, whether it's 10, 12. You know, typically in the suburban setting, you tend to capture the most immediately affected people in that situation, because 150 feet is kind of arbitrary. You could have a lot that's a little bit larger and then, you know, on one prop, on one project, you noticed four people on the next one. I mean, 150 doesn't really mean anything. It doesn't mean anything as far as drainage issues, view lines, traffic. I mean, it's, to me, it's, I agree, it's arbitrary and it's, and if anything, it's, it's, it's very, you know, sort of light. You know, I always say, you can never over-notice something. You can under-notice and get grief about it. You can never over-notice and get grief about it. It's always better to err on the side of over-noticing. I do realize sort of the staff time and the practical issues. You know, another thing to consider, and this is something that, you know, our, our big neighbor to the west does, is we actually require that the applicant pay for the notices. And we require that they send the notices out and then provide us with proof that they've sent them out in terms of C, so that, you know, as far as a cost savings issue. There's nothing in Virginia code that says we have to do it. And now, sometimes we will do it, and, and staff can always, can always do it. But there's also options about requiring, you know, especially on like a larger case, you have a developer with, with deep pockets, I don't think the city should be shy about asking them to do it and ask them to notice a whole bunch of people and have them pay for it, have them pay for the postage. It's not that much really for them. So another thing to think about. I think, you know, you cast a wider net. So other thing is the signage. You know, state code does require that properties be posted, but there's no rules about what the signs have to look like. And what you'll see around the state is a huge range of signage, from really great, easy-to-read, large, professional, professionally-looking signage to what we kind of have, which are like Realtor signs that someone kind of handwrites in sometimes, you know, with a marker, or someone puts a little, prints something out and tapes it to it. I think we need to increase the size of the signs that we're using so that they're, you know, sort of more legible, so that people, you know, driving by or walking by, it draws their attention. I agree with Melissa, the signs actually, they actually do work sometimes better than anything else. People notice that. People in their neighborhoods, you know, they notice when the sign goes up in the yard, whether it's a Realtor sign, you know, some political sign. People notice it. People are walking their dogs, people are driving by. And if they see a sign, a city official city sign, they'll probably read it. But it has to be legible. It's got to be, you know, big enough to read and, and, you know, I don't know if you've seen the, and not that Fairfax County's signs are perfect, but, you know, they use like, you know, we use these like big yellow wooden board signs that we then print out, large posters that we then tape onto the sign. You've probably seen them around. But, you know, whereas our signs in the city look kind of, look kind of flimsy in comparison. And after it rains one time, our signs tend to be illegible, too, if there's any kind of weather issue. So, so I think those could be improved as well, you know, and it wouldn't be all that expensive. You know, I don't know how many you think you can post in a year, but, you know, I, I think it wouldn't be that big a deal to, you know, get bigger signs that are easy to read. So those are kind of my two suggestions. I think, you know, as I said, it's always better to over-notice than under-notice. Earlier is better. I mean, we have the benefit of having these work sessions, which not all jurisdictions do. And so, you know, the work session is, is the, you know, giving people a heads up prior to a work session is, is a good time, as opposed to prior to a decision day where we're going to, you know, vote. And so, to the extent that you could notice, you know, the 10 most, the nearest neighbors before a work session, you know, I think that typically is adequate. So anyhow, so those are just some ideas. I mean, certainly look at other neighbors, you know. I think Arlington, you know, does, does things differently and, and there, you know, maybe staff has already done this, but maybe try to find some best practices from other, you know, jurisdictions in the region and get some ideas of how we could do it better, because there certainly are ways we could. And, yeah, I mean, everyone, we, we on the commission, as much as staff and everybody else hate to hear that, when somebody comes out and says, well, I just heard about this. But of course, I always say, well, if you showed up, then you found out somehow. And so, the system kind of worked, but if they say, I just found out about it yesterday, you know, yeah, it'd be great if we could give people a better notice. So, so that's my soliloquy on that topic. I deal with that actually myself sometimes. So those are my suggestions. And I'm happy to, again, to sit, you know, Jeff, if you want to reach out to me, you know, sort of offline, and I'm happy to provide you, you know, at least my experience of what we do in Fairfax, if it's at all helpful.
Sure, that'd be great. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Brent. Ms. Weiss, do you have any comments?
Not a lot to add. I, I support a lot of what Brent just said, so I think that was terrific. I think over-communication is our friend. I think we should take then all of the above approach, particularly given Mr. Krasner's insight that other jurisdictions ask developers to pay for it. I think that's a great idea for our number two. I think we should ask developers to pay it, and in which case, a notice should go out before the working session and before the, the action. On the signs, I think signs are great. We, you do need owner cooperation or some sort of verification that the sign stays up for as long as we need it to stay up, so I guess just, I don't know what the enforcement is on that. And I agree, the signs should not be an eight-and-a-half-by-11 paper with 1,000 words of legal use on it. I think it should be large and eye-catching and easy to understand. And, you know, if we develop that website, like Mr. Stevens suggested, which I think is a great idea, you could put a QR code on the signs that would take people straight to the website and provide more detail on the site. I support electronic notifications, you know, just in the theory that the more this information is out, the more likely somebody is who's affected is to notice. I would not even suggest bifurcating it or dividing the city into four. I would suggest, you know, if there was just a weekly or whatever email with a list of all the sites that are subject to, you know, decision, action, site plan, subdivision, have the list and people can click on it if it's relevant to them, or they can tell their friends about it if they happen to notice. So I think these are all great ideas and I think we should explore all of them.
Alright, thanks. I have a couple of thoughts, basically just whatever I said. I did have one question. Sending out two of the mailings, is the main cost the postage? Because presumably you build the list once, you send it out, maybe double-check the list before you send out the second notice, but, and I guess printing and stuffing the envelopes. But I, yeah, I, I think in some cases sending two mail notices wouldn't be that much more expensive and if we could pass the cost on to the applicant, that'd be great. I would think about the timing. The post office is terrible now, no offense to the post office, but my, like, the mail we get for work now is highly unreliable and takes a lot longer than it used to. So 10 days, I don't know, might not be enough time. I agree with what Ms. Weiss just said. Like, I would have a, you know, all these email lists that you can sign up for. I would have one that just goes out once a week that lists everything that's essentially a posted, you know, publicly posted planning department thing. So, and then what will happen is the neighborhood, like, you know, invested people will be on that list and then they'll get it and if it's something in their neighborhood, they'll forward it to their neighborhood email address and that'll be the most effective way. And then I think the signs thing seems like the easiest, most effective way and I, we should just do that. And I guess the question is stuff like, are, is there requirements as to where exactly they're placed and who puts them there? And how do you make sure they stay there? And then also making them legible. I, QR codes, I don't know, Corey, you're crazy, nobody uses QR codes. But a very brief explanation of what is going on and as some sort of a, hey, it's case number three, go to the website, look it up sort of thing would, would be great. Any QR code I can? The kids, they love those QR codes. But can we do all three? Could we send multiple letters, post a sign and have an email list? I'm not, I'm sure that's not what Jeff was looking for. But I would say definitely let's do the signs, good signs, and I assume we still have to do at least one letter. Is that true? Or can we just do a sign and, I wouldn't just do a sign and call it done.
Well, I think, I mean, I, right now, the, the requirement is, you know, the Apon letters, 150 feet, 10 days before the, the public hearing. I think anything else you do, you know, above that is, you know, added and great.
I would do the signs above that. That seems like an easy thing to do, especially if they're good signs. But I would definitely look into an email distribution list of all public notices for the busybodies that like to know everything.
Okay.
And then, yeah, pick, pick Brent's brain. He seems to have some first-hand experiences.
Sure, definitely.
So, alright, is that it? Are we done? It's not 10:30 yet. I think we're done.
Alright.
In, in terms of, um, next meeting, well, I'm looking at the calendar here. We've got a...
Second.
And we've got, it's tomorrow, Plan will come back, it looks like. We're gonna get to our work plan update, get a CIP snapshot. That sounds exciting. Alright, that all sounds doable. Alright, Gary, unless you have anything, I'm gonna say meeting adjourned.
No, that was it. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, everybody.